Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for December 19th, 2022. I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss matters made exempt under federal law and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Have a motion to go back into public session?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good evening. Welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for December 19th, 2022. We please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the grandmother-in-law of Amanda Burns, the father-in-law of Lisa Statler, the mother-in-law of Christina Roper, and the brother of Lori Melongrano.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to start with our first public comment on agenda-related items. Nobody signed up? Okay. Ron, we're going to go to the superintendent's report for you.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. So at the last meeting of the calendar year, I like to give the 2022 or the Year in Review presentation, which I will do momentarily, and I'll deliver that presentation from the podium. But before I do that, I just want to share some updates. Yesterday, we sent out a lovely newsletter. There was just one thing that I want to call your attention to. We say that the schools are on holiday recess from December 26th until January 3rd. Just a correction on that. With January 1st being on a Sunday, the holiday is observed Monday, January 2nd. Schools will reopen on January 3rd. So we'll send out a correction this week just on that calendar to... It's been corrected, so anybody who hasn't viewed it can go on now and view it. But I just wanted to clarify that the holiday recess period concludes on Monday, January 2nd, and we reopen all schools on January 3rd, Tuesday. We have, with this being December, it's been quite eventful already. I do have my snowflake tie on. I know we're... We have a far shot from the camera there, but fortunately, the weather has been very cooperative for us. I have been out there at 4:30 in the morning, but generally, two wet roads, not icy roads, and certainly not unsafe roads. So we've been fortunate. It looks like we'll be able to escape the week without any major weather events for snow. But then again, as I say that, it's only Monday, so we'll see where that goes.
Bush of my lawn.
Bush of my lawn. So we've been fortunate in that regard. My thanks to our facilities team. The most important snow calls in many cases are the ones that never happen, and that's because we have a dynamite facilities team. They're here at 4:00 AM treating the campus, making sure that if there are wet grounds and sub-freezing temperatures, that the conditions are safe for our students and staff upon arrival. So just my highest commendation to Mr. Verboise and his team. That team works tirelessly to make sure that our campuses are prepared for our students and staff. So thank you. With regard to just some concert and upcoming events, this is concert season in our schools. It is just so wonderful to see so many people coming out to support our students, support the arts, support music in our students' lives. And we have two more concerts left. We have the high school orchestra tomorrow night. That concert is scheduled to start at 7:00 PM. And then we have the middle school joint orchestra chorus concert happening at 5:30 on Wednesday night. And just preceding that, we have a Pioneer League game on Wednesday at 4:15 in the high school gym. So plenty to do here on campus and just some wonderful events. The 4th and 5th grade choral concerts happened last week, and they were absolutely dynamite. Today, our high school choir students went down to each of the three elementary schools to perform Christmas carols. My favorite part was when our high school students sat with the elementary school students and sung Christmas carols together. So that was a really special thing to see kindergartners and 12th graders side by side. We are launching an Aaronatics club at our high school, so many know this as drones. So we'll be looking at launching that and getting into a competition mode. More information is forthcoming. There was an informational meeting held today. So if you're interested, you can reach out to Mr. Rubio, our science research teacher at the high school, for more information. I attended that informational session. It looks really exciting. So anyone who maybe has an interest in drones, an aptitude in drones, is certainly welcome to it, and the coding that goes into drones as well is welcome to reach out to Mr. Rubio. Some good news. I wanted to share that at the January 23rd Board of Education meeting, we have a Putnam Northern Westchester Bowsie Student of Distinction who will be honored here. So Brendan Grimley will be honored as a student of distinction on January 23rd. We've also invited the Yorktown High School Boys Soccer Team to the January 23rd Board of Education meeting. They did something that has only happened a couple times in school history, and by reaching the regional championship, they really impressed us with good sportsmanship and great play, so they'll be invited here as well. And one more recognition before I move to the podium. Braden Reynolds won the NI AAA Scholar-Athlete Essay Competition, which is just for Section 1, which is absolutely tremendous, and what an honor. So now Braden will move on to the state, and then hopefully the regional, and then hopefully the national, and that is just a tremendous, tremendous honor. So my congratulations to Braden. So at this point, I'm going to transition into the 2022 Year in Review, so I'll just make my way to the podium. So with school districts, the fiscal year is a little bit different than the calendar year. However, at the end of the calendar year for school districts, we begin heading into budget season and budget preparation in earnest. So this is where we look at all of our programs, we look at all of the different aspects of the school experience, staffing, enrollment, capacity, and put those all together to formulate a budget that will ultimately present to the Board of Education later on in the spring and to taxpayers for their consideration in May. With this presentation, we'll be providing you with numerous updates. We'll look at each of these departments, and I just want to commend the leadership of each of the departments. The directors are here, assistant superintendents are here, in the event that there are questions that you'd like to present, they're certainly here and are capable of answering. Mr. Barrett's leadership in athletics has been tremendous. Mrs. Amerling has stepped into this curriculum role, as has Ms. Sanfilippo into her business role, and we have really kept some great continuity despite the new faces in their respective positions. Mr. Verboise oversees our facilities operation. Dr. McGinnis oversees human resources. Mr. Rosen oversees pupil personnel services, and Ms. Forsberg oversees technology. I'll just begin by reminding our community of our vision statement. I won't read the slide to you. It's there. We'll make sure that this presentation is posted to our website, and certainly, the Board of Education meeting will be posted to our cable channel and website as well. That's what we do. That's what we aspire to. We are the home of VSTEAM. We continue to be the home of VSTEAM. There are some wonderful things happening in our school district each and every day. There was a great makey-makey event in one of our life skills classes. We had a great event here with kindergartners who are doing age-appropriate coding, and so many other wonderful opportunities for our students. We have been recognized all across the region, all across the state, all across the country for the good work that we do, but we know that that's only secondary to the outcomes that our students show and all the great things that our students accomplish. There are so many great photos here. Each of the schools are represented, and it grounds us in the importance of our work and what our work really is, which is to give each of our 3,400 students as many opportunities as we can and provide them with the greatest possible learning experience and the greatest possible learning environment that we're capable of. I'll start with an update in curriculum to just share with the board and share with our community some of the things we're reflecting on in 2022 and some of the things we're looking forward to in 2023. And the column in the right in the 2023, as we go through this presentation, I just want to share, the column on the right will have budget implications. As we begin to plan, you'll start to see each of these items be reflected in our budget preparation. So I won't, again, I won't read the slides, but we have worked through curriculum in every regard, in every aspect, at every grade level. We've offered new elective courses, and we're really excited about new elective courses. We have new learning standards that are on the horizon, and we're preparing on that. My commendation to Ms. Amerling, who really has picked up where Ms. O'Shea left us, and Ms. O'Shea did some wonderful, wonderful things in her time here in Yorktown, and Ms. Amerling and her team have done just a tremendous job in moving us forward. So my thanks to Ms. Amerling, to Ms. Chesser, Mr. Miller, and certainly the principals of our schools. Looking ahead, we're looking to continue our summer programs. The summer programs have been really effective for us, and not just in PPS, but we have summer reading programs, summer ENL programs, and those have been quite beneficial in seeing students move their level of achievement forward. We're always exploring new electives. I just want to highlight that because that certainly has budget and curricular implications. And as always, we're keeping an eye on enrollment. Enrollment drives everything that we do, whether it's course offerings, how many sections we'll need to offer of a specific class or at a specific grade level. Kindergarten enrollment and registration certainly drives the number of kindergarten sections, and at the elementary level, with each section that you add, it's also phys ed. It's also music. It's art. It's all the other courses that come with the section that we have to be mindful of. In athletics, and I limited the work to just one slide for each department. I didn't want to present a 45-slide presentation to you. We certainly were capable of doing that, but we wanted to give you the highlights and give our community the highlights of where we've been, where we're headed. In athletics, I'm especially proud that we have six fall scholar-athlete teams and 149 individual New York State scholar-athletes, and that shows that our students are excelling in the classroom and on the field of play. We have made some tremendous upgrades to all of the gymnasium facilities in our district. HVAC upgrades have been remarkable. The painting has been remarkable. The upgrades at the middle school gymnasium have just been so incredible, and anybody who visits that space has been nothing but complimentary of the facility. We also, in 2022, hosted the Section 1 Basketball Championship. It was the first time that a high school had hosted that event, and it was Yorktown. So we're happy to do that again, although that tournament warrants such a big crowd. It would be best played at a larger arena, a larger stadium, but the one thing that our district will do is we'll step up for students and step up for children. So we have already agreed that if there isn't another venue that is of a more appropriate size and capacity, Yorktown is happy to host that event again. And looking forward to 2023, we anticipate in early in 2023, the installation of the new Jumbotron outside. And my thanks to Senator Murphy for securing a New York State Dormitory Authority grant for us to cover the cost of the Board. It is going to be a tremendous addition to our facility. We're looking to continue to build participation in sports. We have about 60% of the student body and counting participating in at least one sport, and that is just a great, great number for... I believe it's actually even higher than that. I don't want to misquote what Mr. Barrett shared with me, but I think, last check, a little over 60%. From a facility standpoint, there have been some tremendous upgrades, and I thank the steering committee of our district, of our Board, for their guidance. First, on the ground level, it's the daily disinfection. Our custodians, on top of their regular duty, are disinfecting the spaces. We've seen the uptick in flu, RSV, COVID throughout, and it's not unique to Yorktown, but I do like to think that we're doing our part. We have portable handwashing stations that we've reintroduced to some of the large spaces at our middle school and our high school. We also are using the, what's called the Clorox 360 product, to disinfect each of those spaces, instructional spaces in our district. We've made some tremendous HVAC upgrades, so the gymnasium at, in this very building in the middle school did not have air conditioning, and it had unpredictable heating. Both have been remedied through the work of the steering committee and some of the work that the district has done. We'll continue to finish up some of the projects from this past summer, and the vast majority of projects are 100% done and completed, on time, within the budget. We're delighted with the new cafeteria at the high school. The students have received it very favorably, and certainly, the air conditioning in the cafeteria has been a welcomed change for our elementary school students. Looking forward, there's a lot of work that continues to be needed. The work of our steering committee is never done. We are looking at some more sustainability projects. We're looking at LED lighting throughout our district and opportunities to upgrade site lighting on our campuses. And for anyone who's left a board meeting at 6:00, 7:00, 8:00, 9:00 o'clock at night, you'd agree that more lighting would be a helpful addition to our campus, and we'll continue to do that. We're also talking about training and mentoring. We've seen staff turnover. We've seen staff get promotions within, and we had a mentoring program, I believe, five years ago that we initiated. And given the turnover that we're experiencing, and not just for new positions or retirement, but promotions from a cleaner to a custodian, from a custodian to a senior custodian, senior custodian to head custodian, and we want to make sure that we're able to cultivate leadership and continue to cultivate leadership. So we're actually looking at a training and mentoring program for our custodial and facility staff. From an HR, human resources perspective, there's a lot that's been done over the calendar year 2022. There was one cycle of retirements and the change of the school year. We had 86 regular hires throughout the course of the year. Forty-two substitute teachers, substitute clerical employees, substitute CTAs who've been hired throughout the course of the year as well. There has just been so much that has come out of Dr. McGinnis's office. Any change to a contract is implemented by Dr. McGinnis's office. There's been a lot of outreach into our school buildings, answering of questions, making sure that any questions or concerns get resolved at that level, and Dr. McGinnis and her team have done just a tremendous job in being available to our staff and being a resource to our staff. Looking ahead, we want to continue to expand the candidate pool. We actually are working to diversify the candidate pool. We're participating in a number of job fairs throughout the region. We are looking to digitalize employment records. Believe it or not, in schools, it's still a very much paper-based system, so we're looking to move toward the digitization of a lot of our personnel records, and certainly, that work is ongoing. And ultimately, one thing Dr. McGinnis has been great at doing is looking at more efficiencies while maintaining the most accurate set of records. That goes to attendance. That goes to credits and advancement on the salary schedule and implementing language from contract settlements. And so my commendation to Dr. McGinnis for all of her work in ensuring the accuracy in these areas. In PPS, PPS is just, it's a broad term, which includes special education. Quite often, the two are referred to interchangeably, but they're actually not. PPS has, is a broader umbrella that special education fits within. Health services, our nurses also fit within that umbrella. Our clinical team and the mental health professionals also are within that umbrella. So it's a very, very large umbrella that PPS oversees. That includes the ESY program. This past summer, 2022, we ran eight full-day classes. Just to give you some context, the summer before that and the summer before that, we ran six, and in prior years, it was as low as four. So we're at eight and will likely be at nine. Thanks to the support of the Board of Education, we were able to introduce the Bright Program, so that has been a great and valuable resource in getting children who are school avoidant, who don't necessarily want to come to school, to come to school. As I was going to visit another one of our schools earlier last week, early in the week last week, the Bright counselor was on the curb, meeting with the family to get a student to come into school, and I was just so impressed by that attention to detail, that commitment to our students and to the student who was outside that day. And sure enough, the student did come into school and went on with their day. We have noticed an increase in referrals, CSE, CPSC, 504 referrals, and certainly, an increase in staff to meet the needs of our students, and not just, when I say staff, it's not just teachers, it's teachers and our related service professionals. Looking ahead, there are some obvious items, and there are some less obvious items. So certainly, we expect the growth in CSE, CPSC, and 504 referrals to continue. We are looking at the needs of the students to identify what programs we will offer and what spaces are available to house those programs for the coming school year. Those will certainly have budgetary implications, and we certainly know that going into the budget development process. One piece of news that I'm excited for and hoping to, that I could extend this invitation to you, for our Board of Education, certainly for our administrators, we're hosting the Pioneer League Dinner Dance on May 31st at our high school. We have the facility, and honestly, it's thanks to our steering committee, we have the facility now where we can host the Pioneer League Dinner Dance, and this has meant a lot to Mike Rosen. It's meant a lot to me to be able to host, and it's not just for our Yorktown students. It's all of the students across the county who are in the Pioneer League program. And so when you think of the Dinner Dance, dancing is part of it, which means there's music and loud music at that. However, that environment's not always conducive to every student who's in the program, so now we need another quiet space. Prior to having our high school cafeteria air-conditioned, we didn't have that secondary space. Yes, you can try to go outside, but in late May, it could either be really hot or raining. So we have the space in the gymnasium where it could be more of the dancing environment for the students. We have a quieter space that we can house in our cafeteria, which can be for just a more relaxed environment, eating, and then we have the beautiful courtyards, which were just recently updated, where we can open up weather permitting. So it's exciting to be able to have the facility to be able to offer the opportunities to our students, and so we're truly excited about that. We are going to be going out into the community, soliciting donations, so that is forthcoming so that we can have great food and beverages for our students and take-home items for the students in the program. And in technology, that's also growing very quickly. We've expanded our one-to-one device initiative from 6th grade down to 3rd grade, and that has been absolutely tremendous. Our Sharp touchboards are available and readily available, and this is an example of one that we're actually looking at now and presenting from. Cybersecurity has been a really, really important topic of conversation for us in recent years. You'll recall, in October of 2020, I believe, we were hacked. Our systems were hacked, and it was a ransomware-style attack on our system. Since that day, we have really implemented some stringent measures beyond what we had previously had. Multi-factor authentications, multiple platforms for our networks, for our internet providers, so that we're able to be a lot more agile in the delivery of services. We have increased our tech staff because technology has permeated every aspect of our organization. Moving ahead, we have started a MacBook Air pilot. We had several teachers participate in this pilot. We're hearing great feedback. We're hearing lots of efficiencies from our staff, and we're excited for that. And one of the other exciting pieces, I won't read all of the items there, they're there for your review. One of the other exciting pieces is wireless casting. So at this point, what we expect our students to do and our staff to do is to collaborate, to be able to go into an instructional space, work together. What we're aspiring to do is if the children have their Chromebooks, wirelessly, they can take their content, put it onto a screen, it's password-protected, and we can collaborate, and everybody can see what's on my screen. Or if I'm a teacher walking around a classroom and I see somebody doing something great on their Chromebook, I can say, wow, that looks terrific. I like what you're doing. Here, put that onto the screen, and now I can take your work and share it wirelessly from wherever you are. So that is kind of just where we're headed with regard to the next level of collaboration within classrooms and outside of the classrooms. And then finally, our business office. The business office is what puts it all together. So all the curriculum needs, the technology needs, the PPS needs, and all of our facility needs get put together, and they come through our business office, because at the end of the day, we have to work within a tax gap and a fixed budget, and it's the work of Ms. Sanfilippo and her team to ensure that we're doing so. So some of the things in 2022 that happened were the business office policies. My thanks to the Policy Committee of the Board for reviewing all of the business office policies, and so many wonderful adjustments and updates were made to reflect current and best practice. And then certainly, looking forward, we have the budget development process that we have already begun, in fact. We begin the meetings with our respective department heads and building principals after the holiday recess in earnest, but the conversations on budget development have already happened. In fact, we have a timeline here that show where we are in our process. So in the first couple months, and I would even throw January in there, we have the school and department budget planning. We'll begin our presentations to the Board and the community in February, March, and April. We'll continue with those presentations. Budget adoption, budget hearing will happen in April and May, and that takes us to May 16th, which is our budget vote and trustee election. So it's hard to think that far out when we're in December and we're getting ready for the holidays and just less than a week, but that's where we are, and that's where our planning has led us. Now regardless of where we are in the school year, whether we're looking back or moving forward, we have always the goal of continuous improvement. We want to get better in every aspect of our organization, whether it's how the facilities are maintained, the instructional program that we're putting before our students, or our communications, PPS program. We want to get better, and that's something that we talk about regularly as an administrative leadership team, is constantly getting better and improving on our work. We often talk about the concept of what is the next level of our work, and that's something that resonates with all of us. We certainly need to have a conversation on the upcoming, on the needs and space, needs of space that we have. We are growing. As a school district, we're growing, whether it's in program or in student needs or in enrollment, we're growing. And we need the capacity of our buildings to match the growth that we're showing from an instructional standpoint, from a student need standpoint, from an enrollment standpoint. So the Board, I anticipate, will be appointing new architects this evening. Once that appointment is carried out, we'll certainly be working with the architects to think about some of the options to create new space or to modify existing space to maximize the existing footprint that we have. But space is something that's certainly front and center on our minds. And then certainly, it's planning the budget for the 23, 24 school year. That will be here in very short order, and it's a tall order to prepare the budget from scratch, and I know Ms. Sanfilippo and her team are certainly up to it, and will be working with all of the department heads and all of the building principals to hear what their needs are programmatically, from a material and supply standpoint, from a personnel standpoint, from a transportation standpoint, and from every other perspective. And that will all come together, and we'll be delivering that through a series of presentations to the Board and to the community, so our community is aware, as in previous years. All of our presentations will be posted to our website. It is the most transparent process possible. Everything is on the website. Everything is discussed in public meeting, and if you have any questions, you're certainly welcome to contact Ms. Sanfilippo. And if you have any questions, you're certainly welcome to contact Ms. Sanfilippo. Her email is posted to the website as you see the presentations. If there are any questions that arise, please know that we're happy to answer them. That concludes the formal presentation that I had. I'll return to my seat, and if there are any questions, we'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. As usual, the district is always quite busy, but thank you very much. Pete, did you have any questions?
No.
Lisa?
No. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to all of the leaders of the district that make it what it is.
Carol?
I'm good, thanks.
Freshman, Mike?
I'm good.
All right, I have two. Ron, can you explain, you know, we were talking about the Jumbotron going out there, and you said it was a dormitory grant for Senator Murphy, who has not been our senator for quite a while. Can you just explain the twists and turns it took us to get here?
Yes. This has been five years in the making. There were numerous approvals that we had to obtain before we could proceed with the ordering of the scoreboard. The scoreboard is over $300,000 in cost. So it's not something that our operating budget could sustain or should it sustain. So five years ago, Senator Murphy and I had a conversation about a scoreboard and how wonderful it would be to have this digital scoreboard as part of our school district. And Senator Murphy pointed us in the direction of a Dormitory Authority grant. We applied for the grant. We were awarded the grant. And the awarding of the grant is just the beginning of the process. There's a lengthy review done by the New York State Dormitory Authority. Then there's a lengthy review done by the State Education Department. And throughout that time, it's just a back and forth between the district, the State Education Department, the Dormitory Authority, and the manufacturer of the board. Because five years later, is the board still even being made? And is that the latest and greatest? So there is some adjustments. As one board becomes obsolete and you want to change the product, you go through another review. So this is about five years in the making.
So it's not as simple as just getting a check and running with it. Okay. And then my second question is, you're talking about wireless casting. Do we have enough wireless capability within our buildings now to be able to do that? I knew that was a problem at one point.
Yes. Part of the technology upgrades and the security upgrades was increasing our bandwidth and increasing the capacity within our district to be able to transmit large traffic through the internet. We found in 2020, and actually, 2021, when we were doing a lot of live streaming with the remote model, the hybrid model, we found that we needed more bandwidth. So we moved in that direction to increase our bandwidth.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on. Did you have anything else on the superintendent? You're done. Okay. We're going to move on to board reports. We'll start with policy. Carol?
Sure. We had, we met last on November 29th. We completed our review of the Code of Conduct. However, we will be taking one final thorough review and making any edits as necessary. We had to cancel our December 15th regular policy meeting due to the weather, and we're trying to reschedule that meeting. That's to be determined. However, we will be meeting on January 12th to continue our final review or begin our final review of the Code of Conduct.
Thank you. Freshman, you audit?
Sure. So the Audit Committee will meet after the new year. We also plan to interview the community, interview for the community member position. That is vacant. So Peter, Lisa Wall, and I will be interviewing by Zoom, and we will keep you posted.
Thank you. Mike, Fiscal Advisory?
Fiscal Advisory meets January 10th. Right now, we have a couple of things on the agenda, along with the budget process, claims auditor, review, insurance deductibles, stuff like that.
Terrific. And steering, we met two weeks ago to interview candidates for, after our RFP, to see what architectural firm. It was unanimous for the person that, the company that we chose. And we're really looking forward to starting the process in January, hopefully, and working forward. So we'll move on to board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 21st and the December 5th meetings?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the Treasurer's report for November 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? And can I have a motion to approve the extra classroom report for November 2022?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Under Personnel, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have a tenure appointment. We have other compensation, extra duty, additions to substitute list, a resignation. And under Classified Personnel, we have appointments to the civil service. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Business Office, we have a change order, a motion to accept the change order for the summer 2022 district-wide improvement programs. We have one for Healy Electric and another for J&amp;M. These are both unused, so they're deducted. We get the money back.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? ScoreVision, a motion to approve the agreement with ScoreVision for the purchase and installation of the Jumbotron for the Charlie Murphy Field in the amount of $370,623 paid via a New York State Dormitory Authority grant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District hereby accepts the proposal submitted by Mamassi for Architectural and Engineering Services. The President of the Board of Education is hereby authorized to enter into a direct agreement with Mamassi pending District Council review.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Be resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education hereby empowers the Board President to enter into agreement with Absolute Auctions and Realty, Inc. for auction management services in relation to declared surplus and/or obsolete equipment during the 2022-23 school year.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Be resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education hereby declares the following equipment items as surplus and recommends the sale and/or disposal of, and they are listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Curriculum, a motion to approve the following Yorktown Congress of Teachers professional improvement proposals. There's one listed below.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Special education, a motion to arrange the following placements as of December 19th, 2022. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Gifts, grants, and donations, a motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations at the middle school, $400 from the Mildred East Strang PTA for the Medieval Times field trip. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Board comments. Pete, I'll come back to you.
Really just want to wish everyone a happy holiday, safe, healthy, joy to families, and we'll see you next year.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah, same. Great first half of the school year and wish everybody happy holidays, and we'll see you in January.
Terrific. Freshman?
Same. So have a wonderful holiday season, and we'll see you back in January.
Carol?
Wishing everyone the very best throughout the holiday season and the year ahead.
Lisa?
Same thing.
And me too. Everybody a happy and healthy New Year as well. We will see you in January. Ron, Lisa, Deidra, anything? We have public comment number two? Nobody? So can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Good night, everybody. Thank you.